Eternal and all wise father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can gather together on this side of a new year. This new year offers us new opportunities, but it also offers us new challenges. But even in the midst of opportunities and challenges, we are well aware that we can make it based on your track record. Thank you for these commissioners and thank you for the citizenry of Vance County. And for all the people who are here and those who have been served, those who will be served, those who are being served. We give you sincere and humble thanks. Our prayer is that you will grace us with your presence here this night and even in all the nights and days to come. Go before us as a leading lamp, guide and direct our path. Give these commissioners the wisdom and the knowledge that they need to make the decisions that are needful and necessary for this county. We ask that not in our name, but in your name, your name that has all power. We pray, amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, the next item we have is public comments. We have one individual who has signed up for public comments tonight. You want to come forward? Just give us your name and address.
All right, Brandon Link, thirty-four twelve Cameron Drive here in Henderson. Really quickly, we just wanted to introduce ourselves. From the association standpoint, we had a couple of changes this year effective January from what we had prior. So myself, Assistant Chief at Watkins Fire Department, I work in the city of Durham. And Powell Wilkins, he's Assistant Chief at Oxford Fire Department and he's the chief at Epsom Fire Department. Will be the president, vice president for the Fire Association for this coming year. Mike Fisher is going to continue being our treasurer as he has been for the last several years. And Rob Montague with the Forestry Service is our secretary for this year, as he has been for the previous few years. So we wanted to kind of introduce ourselves and put a name with the face. Most of you guys and gals up here I know or know of. And we've worked well over the last few years together. And we wanted to just let you know that we've got a plan of action that we're looking for for this year. We're, we got a big year ahead of us. ISO inspections and they're actually coming around earlier than projected. It was supposed to have been last quarter of twenty twenty-four and it's looking like it's going to be the second quarter of twenty twenty-four. The state had a backlog for the longest time and now they've caught up in their head. We've had, one department has already been inspected. Another department that has got their schedule and we're anticipating getting our notice within the next probably month or two to have our ninety day window for one hours will be, and that'll be probably everyone else in the county too. So we've got that that's on the table as well as obviously the waiting on the study to come back and how we're going to have to adapt or maybe embrace that change that could be coming. So we wanted to let everyone know if there's anything we can do on the fire services behalf. Not on an independent department, we're not going to dare speak for, you know, Cokesbury or Drury or whatever, but from the fire service as a whole in Vance County. Feel free to reach out to myself or Powell at any given time. And we're going to kind of walk in lockstep as we go through this unknown, I guess, until we figure out what the, what the recommendation will be. So if anyone's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If you want to reach out to me afterwards, I'll be happy to speak with anyone following that.
Could you give me the breakdown again, you?
Myself is the, will be the president for the association for this year.
Okay, Brandon Link, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And Fisher, Mike Fisher, the treasurer.
Mike Fisher is the treasurer, yes, sir.
Sure, sure. Powell Wilkins, who, Powell Wilkins?
Powell Wilkins.
Vice, or something?
Vice President, yes, sir, that's correct.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Could you give me a detail on this inspection you're referring to? Just a brief?
Sure, so we're anticipating it to be a little less in-depth than what it was a few years ago. A few years ago was the first time we went through it. But they come through, essentially when they do an ISO inspection, it pretty much says how strong we are within our district. And ultimately the districts make up the service. So they're going to be reviewing paperwork for the last five years, training, records, maintenance apparatus, checks. Our ability to deliver water to fire scenes, which our, our district is a little bit unique because we're overloaded on one side with hydrants. We're, we're well off with the water lines that run to Oxford. But in the old Watkins area, we're no hydrants at all. That I can't speak for other departments because I'm not sure their makeup. But they'll check us and look great us on that. They'll grade us on our ability to put personnel on scene, which is a big thing. And they'll grade us on our ability to flow the capacity of the structures. So they go around and they graduate, like we've got the college campuses in our district. Daphne School, Clearview Church, a bunch of places like that. They take out the sprinkled buildings because they want to give us the worst case scenario. They don't want to give us any help. So they give us the biggest buildings that's not protected. And that's what our grading is based on, is our ability to flow the capacity of the, of that building if it were on fire.
Thank you.
Those tests are every five years, so that's correct?
That's correct, and we're, we're going to be shy of it because of the, they moved up in the schedule. But it's every, it's anticipated every five years, give or take a few months, that's correct.
Their performance determines the insurance rates for our homeowners.
Yeah, that's a big one in.
That's a big part of it.
Say it again?
Their performance determines the insurance rates largely for, for our homeowners in those respective districts.
So anything over a nine is unprotected. A nine is the minimum, that's the, everyone is supposed to meet that nine S requirement. So then you start lowering down, going down is actually going up, you know, as far as being better. Anything, and as you get lower, it starts to affect your commerce and your industrial and your commercial structures. The homeowner, I believe, is four, anything below a four. Anything below a five will not benefit the homeowner, but it benefits the commercial. So we've got several departments is on that cusp, but that's the goal, is, is the drive for five, so to speak, and everybody get to that point, but it's, it's not easy.
All right. Okay, thank you, Brandon. We look forward to working with you. Sure, we'll have a lot of moving parts this year as we move forward.
We will, thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, I want to take a minute to, to introduce some, some new employees or employees that have changed their, their assignments with us. Ms. Terry, you want to go ahead and start us off?
Yes, sir. I would like to introduce Mr. William Coker as our new Animal Services Manager. Mr. Coker is a native of Vance County and he has experience in the sheriff's office as well as the animal services a few years ago. Anything that you would like to say?
Ma'am, just want to thank you, Frankie and the board for this opportunity. If I can be of assistance to anybody, just let me know. Anytime you would like to come by the shelter and see how it operates, just let me know and I'll be there for you. Worked before.
Looking forward to your leadership. Thank you.
All right, and I believe Waikia, you have someone to introduce to us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Waikia Makin. I am the County Extension Director, Advanced County Corporate Extension. Nice to see you all again. I'm excited to introduce our new 4H agent, Micah Sharp. I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about what he's doing and what he plans on doing, but feel free to give them any advice or suggestions on any programs that you all want to see for youth in the community. And without further ado, Micah.
All right, all right. Good evening. How y'all, how y'all doing today? Pretty well, all right. A little immature right now because this is kind of a cool experience for me. Never been used to something like this, so. But yeah, I said, my name is Micah Sharp. I'm originally from Decatur, Georgia. Currently reside in Central slash Lewisburg, North Carolina, but I'm roughly part of twenty-five minutes from here. I started this position around November of last year, so say about a year and a half. Since I've been here, my main focus was basically getting to know Vance County a little bit more. I'm just seeing what's out there school-wise, who I can network with, build relationships with. So since then, I've been doing a lot of visiting high schools, Boys and Girls Club, where, wherever I could find the most youth, after-school programs and that sort of nature. What I've noticed is within middle schools, high schools, after-school programs, a lot of the youth actually are struggling mentally. It's not shocking to me, but alarming at the same time for us to be adults not knowing how the youth in Vance County feel. So by noticing things like that, I would go to the Boys and Girls Club up the street every Friday. I've been doing programs with them, started off with a mental health journal. I brought them journals and they gave them about ten, fifteen minutes, let me know how you're doing mentally. Surprisingly, I received a lot of feedback. I gained a lot of trust amongst them and we was able to move from there to start creating vision boards. What do you see yourself doing a few years from now? Also, I was recently at Advanced County High School about last week doing a healthy living on a eating program. Just teaching them a healthier way to eat, things like that, just different lessons. And that would be a six-week program at Vance County High. So moving forward, we have a program, Tech Changemakers, which all in all is basically teens teaching adults how to basically how to maneuver through advanced technology. Like I should see me trying to teach my mom just how to use FaceTime. So that's very, that'd be a very important program. Also, we have Teen Lees, which I have a group of ten kids from, a lot of them from the early STEM middle school. And then, so we have like three categories, probably space aviation, agriculture and computer technology. And what they would do each week, so starting, starting now, but the pro, but they would start to do presentations starting like two weeks from now. And we will go to probably where we find our younger of the youth, so the Boys and Girls Club with their youth turning point elementary schools, and they will be able to illustrate what they learned from the different programs that they, that they've done. So that's pretty much what's been going on right now. Also, I've been recruiting or just spreading the word at the middle schools and high schools that I am partnering with the mentor program, which starting in the spring, they will be able to do, like we're doing college tours. A lot of students, they say, I want to go to college. And then you ask them, well, have you looked at college? They say, no. You, have you ever done the tour? No. So just giving them the opportunity to even travel amongst North Carolina, there's a lot of colleges out there just to, you know, kind of help them out. So that's kind of going forward. If you ever want to know how the programs are going with the youth, I highly suggest, I'm just staying in tune to our newsletters, one every month. Yeah, I'm just happy to be here. Thank y'all for having me. Appreciate it.
How many youth do you have involved right now?
Involved right now, okay, Teen Lees, ten, and Intro to Teen Lees, a total of eight. But that's going to keep growing as it's only been the first, first meeting. Boys and Girls Club, I'd say roughly probably another ten to twelve. And then the numbers, that's in the high school classroom pool, so about twenty plus, twenty to thirty plus.
I heard you say you catered to the Girls and Boys Club. Is that more elementary level? Talking about mental health and I'm just, and you said you was doing a visual mental health activity with those, with those kids, but it's more elementary, do you have?
No, ma'am, that's actually my high school.
That's high school?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, the high school is in the Boys and Girls.
Yes, ma'am, so it's actually divided. Yes, ma'am, so it's actually divided. I tend to work a lot more with the older and then by giving them tips and, you know, tricks, they'll, you know, teach it to the younger kids. So that's kind of how that operates. So the Vision Board was with my older group.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We are working with the younger kids of Boys and Girls Club as well. If y'all haven't been by Boys and Girls Club to see the garden, please go by there. The broccoli's blooming, kale, all that stuff. Call of that, it's open on Fridays.
Okay, what efforts are you all making for recruitment? Because you love, you said like eight here and ten here. I know when I was in high school, a lot of times there may have been programs that everyone doesn't know about, only a select few. So I was wondering what efforts are you all making to recruit people from different backgrounds so that there will be a wide variety and diversity?
So the, the main one, of course, word of mouth with our teens now, social media. So now I am in charge of the Vance County Forest Page, Facebook. So on that, trying to, I should recruit and volunteers as well, so we can actually have more clubs, programs for the community, not just programs that I have my teens run and do it with specifically by actually planning on in the future to have programs for the community so everyone can see what exactly is going on. That's pretty much how that.
We're still doing some traditional 4H programs like the livestock and agriculture.
Yes, sir. But especially like what I think, so instead of me saying, I think y'all should do this, I think y'all should do agriculture. They might have interest in STEM robotics technology. So instead of me trying to force them to do something they might not be interested in, I'm pulling together resources and learning how to accompany them that way. But everything is still, you know, we have the traditional livestock. We have an agent for that as well. Yes, sir.
And the teen side is growing. Last year we only had nine teens in Teen Lees and as you mentioned, we have teen, ten in Teen Lees and then eight more who applied and we were kind of putting.
Yeah, we broke them down.
Yeah, so that's eighteen teens and honestly, a lot of that is word of mouth. They're just talking to each other and they're excited specifically about the robotics and the computer technology part. And so the livestock and agriculture is very important and so we're still offering that, but we want to make sure we stay relevant to what's important right now.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Look forward to good things, so. Working with our youth is always very important.
It is, it's a future.
Very important role. Thank you, thanks for being here. Okay. Next thing, we've got Frankie Nobles, who's our Employee Engagement Team and with our Employee of the Month. Frankie?
Tonight, we're actually going to let Ms. Debbie Scott, one of our members of our engagement team, present this one.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, thank you so much. And to our county manager for supporting this initiative. My name is Debbie Scott. As she said, I work in the sheriff's office. And our nominee is from the sheriff's office this month. Sheriff Brian, where are you? Come on up here too, Sheriff Frank. We are going to ask Deputy Taylor Ensco if she will come up. Right, and so what happens here is each month, we have the task. Employment Engagement Team, Employee Engagement Team, Agreta, and Frankie's our chair. Each month, we have the duty of selecting an employee of the month. And so our nominee for this month is Deputy Taylor Ensco. She works in the Civil Division. And why she was nominated is because when it comes to teamwork, she goes above and beyond to make sure everyone work together to achieve the goals of the Civil Division. She has developed and maintains good relationship with coworkers. When it comes to initiative, she will be the first one to speak up in situations where a supervisor would normally be requested, given ideas of how situations may be handled differently, that would be beneficial to the unit. When it comes to attendance, she rarely calls out, only if she's sick. When it comes to being above and beyond, these are some specifics. She steps in supervisory duties while the supervisor is out making sure that the Civil Division runs smoothly. She makes sure that papers are being served and served on time. She has excellent public relations skills. Also, outside of her civil duties, me personally, I've had a few interactions with her. She speaks to kids at the elementary school outside of her work duty. On several occasions, she has come to my office and asked for some educational activity books that we have. I know one specifically even at the YMCA, right? Also, she has a heart for domestic victims. Each year, the sheriff's office, we have a domestic violence awareness program. And two years ago, we had a business to donate us thirty care packages for victims for, for our county. And after the program was over, she came to my office and she said, are you having more of those care packages left? And I did, and she said, because when I'm out, out on the road, I can give some of these to our victims and help them out. So she has distinguished herself tonight as outstanding. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for being an asset to the sheriff's office and thank you for making a difference in our community.
And also I'd like to bring to you the county's attention, outside of Jonathan Care, this young lady does a lot of research for the Vance County Sheriff Office in the Civil Division. As Jonathan Care will tell you, the Civil Division will get you sued in a heartbeat. And she makes sure the Sheriff Frank and the county events do not get sued. So thank you again. And what I have for you is a challenge coin. It was designed by the Vance County Sheriff Office. On the front of it is the, the sheriff badge and Vance County and the sheriff Curtis Brain. And on the back, it has Matthew five and nine. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. Congratulations and thank you and keep up the good work.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have a public hearing for the budget. We do this every year, prior to the budget, while we're working on the budget, just to get citizen input on any, any recommendations citizens may have. I'm going to open the public hearing now. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the budgets? Okay, there being no one to speak on that, we'll close the public hearing. And that will be, be the end of that one. Next on the agenda, we have an appointment for our is a zoning ordinance text amendment, which is proposed. And I believe, who's going to present that? Okay. And this, this will require a public hearing. I'm going to let you introduce it and then I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you and good evening. Everybody hear me okay? Michael Harvey, I'm your interim planner and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve you for the last few months. What I have before you in your package this evening are amendments to your table permitted uses, specifically the industrial land use category, section six, dealing with special uses. And section twelve definitions modifying allowable land uses within the light industrial and office institutional general use owning districts. As a bit of background, and this is covered in the staff report. In September of two thousand twenty-three, the interim county manager, Mr. Scott Elliott, had tasked staff to begin a comprehensive evaluation of your existing land use regulations, and that was zoning subdivision of manufactured housing. We were also tasked to begin a comprehensive evaluation of your current land use plan. During this evaluation process, Mr. Elliott had asked us to apply specific focus to your industrial land use category. The feeling was, excuse me, that Vance County's industrial land use category, or what you were and were not allowing to develop, was not in line with surrounding counties and that you were not capturing sufficient land uses in several industrial zone properties. You were not marketing those properties to their highest and best possible use and you were losing opportunities for prime economic development in your industrial district land uses. So with that in mind, what staff began to do in working with the county manager was to devise and update your current industrial land uses to make it more centric with what surrounding county and municipal partners were allowing to make you more marketable, to make your districts more in keeping with what surrounding jurisdictions were allowing. And also to address certain inconsistencies you had in your current ordinance to try to address permitting issues. Sheriff Brummett, with your permission, I'd like to share the screen and just briefly go over the actual amendments. There we go. And can everybody see that okay?
Busy sharp.
As well as you can, I'm sure. Now, to keep everybody, and my apologies for my voice, I'm very sorry, but I'm fighting the flu. And number one, I don't want to give it to anybody, but number two, I want to make sure that I cover this information as succinctly as possible. We're only dealing with amendments to light industrial office institutional. So I want to make that, and I want to remind everybody of that, so we're only dealing with those two zoning districts. So red underlined text is obviously new land uses or modified land uses. Strike through text indicates deletions, items we're removing from your ordinance. So for example, we are recommending you include asphalt plants as a special use permit in your light industrial district. One of the rationales behind this addition is that asphalt plants do serve as an economic engine. They are the basis for construction activity. By allowing it, you will be affording and allowing commercial construction activities and promoting it within your county. And as a quick reminder for the board members and mainly for those in attendance in the audience, I want to take a moment to remind everybody how the table permitted uses works. An X indicates the use is not permitted in a given district. So for example, when you see under the AR, which is your agricultural residential district, you see an X for an asphalt plant. That means the asphalt plant is not allowed in that district. Where you see SUP, that stands for obviously special use permit. That means that that use is only permitted if the Board of Adjustment, who handles all your special use permits, approves the permit after they hold what's called an evidentiary hearing, where an applicant has the burden of proving through the submittal of competent material evidence and sworn testimony that they meet all the requirements of the ordinance, allowing for the permit to be issued. Conversely, individuals with standing do have the legal ability to submit evidence demonstrating the applicant hasn't met their burden. Board of Adjustment would then issue the permit or deny the permit based on the facts and evidence entered into the record. Where you may see a P, as you will under chemical manufacturing and processing, which I'll get into in a minute, that's reviewed as a site plan acted on totally by staff. Staff's role and function is to ensure that applicants have met their burden under your ordinance, meaning do they have the right parking? Do they meet setbacks? Do they meet buffering? It's handled completely and totally at the staff level. There is no planning board, Board of Adjustment, or even county commissioner involvement. But staff is obligated and required to enforce your ordinance on those site plan models. So want to continue just to make sure everybody understood what these symbols in your table permitted uses mean. Chemical manufacturing and processing is another area where it was my recommendation to management where Vance County was seriously lacking. And I wanted to break that down into two subsets. Pharmaceutical and medical manufacturing, which I've recommended be permitted in your light industrial district, which means staff review and approval and allow it as a special use permit, again, Board of Adjustment review and approval in your office institutional district. And then chemical manufacturing and processing, other than pharmaceutical medicine, meaning everything else. And again, we do have appropriate. And again, we do have appropriate definitions for these activities in your ordinance. That would only be allowed in your light industrial with the issues of the special use permit. As a rule of thumb, my advice to any municipality or county that I serve is that the most egregious or potentially noxious activities ought to be reviewed and approved through either the special use permit or a conditional process where there has to be public engagement. So as we go through this, this text amendment process, you're going to see that most of my recommendations for any activity that could have negative impacts offsite have to be reviewed in a public setting, in this case evidentiary hearings. Concrete processing preparation distribution is the next land use. Also, light industrials, a special use permit. Data center, we got some questions about what that is at the planning board. Whoops, my apologies. I got mouse happy. Data center is computer center. That's where data is processed. That's a large building with mass computers. That's effectively what it is. We're recommending that that be permitted in both light industrial and office institutional, which means staff approval. Site plan. We have recommended, the planning board approved the recommendation, that current land uses, land clearing inert debris, landfills, minor and major be combined into one central land use category. And the rationale why is that state law really no longer has two distinct categories. They're all treated as one central land use category. So there's no effective reason to have them as two land use categories. And I hope the board finds this helpful. The planning board did. With most of my text amendments, I usually try to provide footnotes to give you some idea of what my rationale was so you can see what the logic for some of the recommendations were. As I continue to move on. And then you'll see at the top, land clearing, debris, landfill, that's the combined land use category. Under machine and welding shops, this is one example of where staff had to fix an existing inconsistency with your ordinance. There was no reference to the existing definitions, which are contained in section 12 of your ordinance. We added the reference as appropriate. Paperboard containers and boxes, manufacturing, assembling and processing. This is an activity that we believe is reasonable as a permitted use in your light industrial district. Petroleum refinery, and we did add a footnote to this. We had the planning board request to this be added as a specific land use to show being prohibited. You'll note that it's stricken throughout the TOE code. We had a couple of planning board members want this listed specifically so that it would be known that this type of activity could not be developed within Vance County. The same goes for pulp, paper and paperboard mills. That's the actual mill operation where raw pulp is turned into paper. Another area where I personally felt Vance County would benefit from an amendment was research facility, both with and without manufacturing. You have research facilities in both medical and non-medical fields that involve both manufacturing and non-manufacturing operations that are popping up in surrounding counties and municipalities. And I believe that you all should take advantage of that. So we've added the land use category. With manufacturing, obviously it should go in your light industrial without manufacturing. We also believe it could have a home in your light industrial district as well as your office institutional district. We believe that that's perfectly reasonable. Under warehousing, we've just added the simple reference as appropriate to section six, which contains provisions for your special use permit standards. Section seven point eight for your parking and then section 12 for definitions. Any questions before I continue? Seeing none. So in article six, which is the section dealing with your special use permit provisions, what we have done here is updated your landfill requirements dealing with licensing operating requirements for the inert debris landfill to collapse those two land use categories into one. And as a, just an observation, the only distinction between your existing land use categories and your ordinance was what was required from the state in terms of what applicants were required to provide your Board of Adjustment. If it was less than two acres, the board required a copy of the facility plan. If it was over two acres, it required a copy of the licensing requirement. Those are the only two distinctions between those two land use categories. So there was really inherently no need to have them as two separate land use case, land use categories in your ordinance. It was just easier to combine them into one. Two major additions are the asphalt and concrete plant, which follow the same standards. We require that access has to be from a state maintained roadway. That they'll have to be screening and buffering requirements. And we've established a perimeter buffering requirement at the request and suggestion planning board. We've added a requirement that the boundary of the property shall not be, my apologies for that. Boundary of the property shall be at least a thousand feet from any residential use or zoning district. This is to address a planning board concern that there may be offsite impacts and they didn't want an asphalt or concrete processing plant to be to a butt a residential land use. The use shall totally enclosed by a security fence or wall, at least eight foot in height. We did add a allowance for asphalt plants that this requirement may be waived if the use is completely enclosed of the fireproof building. We actually have clients that have used the same provision in the past. It's worked well for them. I don't see a reason why Vance County couldn't benefit from the same allowance. All plans shall be reviewed by foreign emergency staff prior to approval to determine that existing services provide adequate protection for citizenry. And then last but certainly not least, we are requiring that applicants demonstrate that the facility has secured or can secure prior to commencement or other serving activity. All required state in North Carolina permits to operate. And that was important for me to throw in there to ensure that there were not going to be any permitting issues, specifically air quality permitting was an issue that we wanted to address. Chemical manufacturing and processing. Key takeaways from this, this standard is to ensure that all plans reviewed by county foreign emergency staff and to ensure that existing services provided are adequate for citizen protection. They also have to be accessed by state maintained roadway for non-pharmaceutical and non-medical manufacturing facilities. We are requiring some of the very similar land use standards for an asphalt plant, again, thousand foot away for residential use or zoning district, same screening requirements and enclosed by a security fence. In consultation with attorney care, he and I have determined that the state has made recent changes to several definitions in the administrative code concerning landfill operations that we will need to update your ordinance on. So my recommendation to you this evening is if you can give me any feedback you have on these changes. And I won't speak for the attorney, but what I would like to suggest is I'd like to take your feedback on any concerns, questions, or any changes you'd like to see. I don't think you want to act on this tonight. I think what I'd like to do is bring back this amendment package with the changes to article 12, excuse me, section 12 of your ordinance updating a lot of your landfill definitions to meet the North Carolina Administrative Code and make sure that your ordinance mirrors what the state now considers several landfill designations that we quite frankly weren't tracking as part of this amendment package, but I'll let attorney care speak to that if, at the appropriate time as he sees fit. But that is the amendment package in a nutshell, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Harvey has presented that package. I'm going to open the hearing for public comment. If anyone has any comment to make on the proposed text amendment changes. Are there any comments from the board?
I got two questions. First of all, on this, these changes, was there any coordination with the city in reference to the ETJ?
There was some coordination. Obviously you have a good partnership with the city. Obviously the county has its own land use plan. So my answer to you is that while there was coordination, my responsibility is to ensure that I'm promoting the county's interest based on its land use plan.
Well, I just want to make sure we do something if we got a chance to be able to be on the same sheet of music and moving in the same direction.
Yeah, and I think, I think we will be, sir, but yeah, I, 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 yeah.
That's fine. Second comment I've got to make is is there anything within this change in ordinances that ends up being in there to take care of anything that's grandfathered?
You have a non-conforming section of your ordinance that addresses existing land uses already that will address what all, what we term grandfathered land uses and since.
I just, I don't care. All I'm, all I'm saying is I just want to make sure if somebody, if it comes to us that is trying to do something and it's already been done, that we can't go back and make them do anything. I want to cover, I want to cover the citizens of this community so that we change anything. They're covered from the banks.
Yes, sir. This is our, this, this will not, this will not impact anybody that legally got permits to do something. In fact, I'll give you the prime example. In August of last year, we permitted an inert debris landfill under my apologies, we permitted an inert debris landfill under two acres. This change, this ordinance amendment does not invalidate their special use permit and doesn't invalidate their ability to move forward with their land use. Yeah, doesn't make it non-conforming at all. They're, they're covered.
Thank you.
Not a problem, sir.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I have a question. Piggybacking off of what Commissioner has to say. If someone was to come in here, how would, would it actually states that his grandfather clause then, or how will we know the difference?
The non-conforming section of the ordinance addresses the, what we term the grandfather clause. So there is a section of the code that actually addresses this issue.
And it's called non-conformity?
Non-conformities. Yes, sir. And without being able to quote it chapter and verse, I'll just say this. Any land use that was legally permitted at the time, it was in existence is allowed to continue subject to compliance with the non-conforming section of the ordinance. To go to Commissioner Hester's point. The change that we're making with a specific reference to the inert debris landfill, it doesn't change the operational parameters or scope of that project. It just, it takes those two existing land use categories, combines them into one. So it doesn't change the legality of that land use, just to give you that example.
This takes us going forward, right?
Correct. But it doesn't, but, but just to make sure everybody's comfortable, it doesn't force them to do anything different or doesn't force them to do anything in addition to what they've already done to legally develop their property.
I was just making sure I was.
No, no, no. And it's a good question to ask, but that's why you have a non-conforming section of your ordinance. Now, not to muddy the water and I don't want to, but your non-conforming section of the ordinance does need to be beefed up, updated.
So how would that take place?
You, you, you ask your staff to do it, but that's something your county manager is working to do as we speak. So I'm going to let her handle that question at the appropriate time.
Awesome. That's all we're talking. Great job.
All right. Are there any other public comments relative to the text amendment that we have? No other comments. Close the public hearing. What would be the pleasure of the board? Need a motion to approve the text amendments as presented.
I put in a motion.
Commissioner, would you mind holding off on that, allowing us to update the definitions to the current code? And in incorporating any additional comments or changes that this board might want in this version?
Okay.
So you won't hold off on any action?
We could have that ready for you the next month.
That's February.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, if you guys look through this over the next couple of weeks and have any comments, feel free to shoot an email to myself, Mr. Harvey as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
No, thank you all. It's been a pleasure working with you and I look forward to continuing.
Okay, thank you.
And apologies for my worst voice, but thank you for putting up with me.
Appreciate you being here when you're under the weather. All right. So that should take care of everything for that issue right now. We'll move forward with the Water District Board. Ms. Perry, I think you have that.
I do. So the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has offered some ARPA funds or American Rescue Plan funding in the amount of $250,000 to perform an asset inventory and assessment study of the county's water system. So if you all would just approve the attached resolution to accept the $250,000 grant and allow the county manager to furnish any needed information and execute needed documentation for the grant.
And we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? All opposed? Hold on, let me correct one thing first. Let me open the Water District Board before we take action. And okay, so we'll take, we have the motion on the second with the Water District Board. Any other discussion? All in favor, I? All opposed? That motion carries.
And so attached is just the monthly operations report for your consideration and review for November twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. Any questions on the monthly operating report? Looks like we're still having a couple of signups and I believe we shouldn't be getting an update on when we can proceed with the, the next phase of our.
Yes, sir. We have a meeting on Friday with LKC to discuss those projects.
Somebody inquired about, they want to sign up for some, what is the fee?
During, I mean, what we've generally done in the past with the new sections, we've generally had that hundred and twenty-five dollar, was that correct? Hundred and twenty-five? A hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. And the board may take action to, to promote that whole system and all that. That would be something that will be coming up. All right. Any other, any other thing else on the Water District Board? Okay, I'll close the Water District Board. Next, we have our Properties Committee report.
So the committee, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Brummond and Commissioner Austin met on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three to review a request from Mr. Faulkner for Vance County to accept thirty-two point sixty-three acres of land and a farmhouse as well. Our co-op extension director, Ms. Makin, presented her proposed use of the land and farmhouse to the committee. The committee has asked the staff to continue to do research to determine if there are any funds that we can solicit for the maintenance of the land as well as how other counties and municipalities handle donations of this magnitude. And I've reached out to several jurisdictions and I've received some comments from other counties. And normally what they do is not accept the land unless they have a use for it at that time. So, but we continue to do research as well as Ms. Makin as well. So, so we'll just keep having those conversations to decide if we want to accept the land. And so the next thing that came out of the Properties Committee was the LED billboards. The committee reviewed a request from Mr. Jonathan Edwards to the Vance County Board of Commissioners to amend the Vance County zoning ordinance to allow for electronic billboards within Vance County's plan and jurisdiction. The committee agreed that they do not want to proceed with any amendments at this time. So just FYI.
That's correct.
Okay. So the next committee was the Public Safety Committee. So the vehicle use policy, the committee, Commissioner Faines, Commissioner Brummond and Commissioner Austin met on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three to review the vehicle use policy and also review possible changes. The county manager recommends that the policy stay the same and allow the county manager to enforce the policy internally and deal with any performance issues that may arise. And so the recommendation from the county manager is to leave the policy as written and the committee agreed at that time.
So there's no action necessary.
It's our recommendation.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry. Just leave the policy as written. So the next thing is the inmate copay, copay policy. So the committee reviewed the proposed policy and discussed the pros and cons to implementing such a policy. The committee agrees that we should implement the inmate copay policy to charge inmates with taking more responsibility for their healthcare. This will reduce the misuse of the correctional health, healthcare system. So the recommendation is to implement with staff's recommended effective date of that policy for the jail. That we'll take action.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Um, to implement policy with staff recommended effective date.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, I?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, so the next, um, thing that came out of the, um, Public Safety Committee meeting was the fire PPE capital request. And so the committee reviewed the request from Chief Wright to move forward with the purchase of certain PPE for the fire staff, and the recommendation of the committee was to allow for purchase of certain PPE. And I know, um, Chairman Brumman has discovered some additional information, so we're going to wait on the air packs until we can do more research, but we would like to request to move forward with, it's actually seven sets of turnout gear, not six. I went back and looked at the paperwork. So it's seven sets of turnout gear for the fire staff.
Will be the pleasure of the board. Second, so the motion would be to move forward with the purchase of seven sets of turnout gear.
Yes, sir.
And we have motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and so the last item is just, um, fire prevention code enforcement ordinance. So AP Triton, who is, um, the consultant that are doing our fire study, they have recommended that we move forward with a pro, with an ordinance, um, for fire prevention. So I've been talking to Jonathan, and so we've reviewed an ordinance that Chief Wright has created, so that's just an FYI for future reference. When we decide to implement that ordinance that was recommended by AP Triton. And it's in your packets for review. FYI only.
All right, that concludes the committee reports. Next, we'll move to our county attorney's report.
Chairman, I have for your discussion and consideration this evening, a resolution I was requested by one of the commissioners to prepare a resolution that would allow our county manager to hire without prior approval as has been uh, for the past, uh, two hires. Um, so that's what I have prepared for your consideration this evening.
Any discussion?
This, this, if this is passed, this would now allow the county manager to hire all levels, all positions without coming to you guys first.
The, the board took action. Different action on that at a, early, at a prior meeting.
Look at this.
Okay, and so now a member that voted in the affirmative for that motion has asked to bring it back, so that's why we're bringing it back tonight for consideration. And I understand now we have a motion from Commissioner Hester to approve this.
I'm not going to make an emotion. I'm just saying I like for us to look at this.
Okay, all right. Comment, any other comments?
I want to make a motion that we let her hire because she wanted to hire.
Okay.
Our second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
That means that you think we do this, right?
This will reverse, this will reverse the action we took a couple of months.
Well, from what she has proven since she's.
A- actually, I don't want to get technical. It doesn't reverse the action. That was only a partial granting. This is the rest of the granting, a full granting of that authority.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, I? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Uh, next we have our consent agenda. It will be the pleasure of the board. Okay, a motion in a second to prove consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Next, we have our miscellaneous appointments. Um, and I think Aunt Kelly would do that.
I can do it. So the Vance County Industrial Facility and Pollution Control Financing Authority, which is a six-year term, um, so recommendation to reappoint Robert Herford, who was appointed, um, February nineteen eighty eight.
And we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? That motion is approved. Um, Mr. Herford is reappointed. Uh, the next is voting delegate for Washington.
Oh, is it Washington? Oh, she didn't indicate.
I believe that's it, right?
Um, I was thinking it's for the NCACC, the General Assembly. It's every, yeah.
It's NACO, which is in Washington.
Oh, is it NACO?
No, when we go to LA.
Mm-hmm, right, that's what I thought. Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, so, um.
What I did is, I think it's in.
It was in twenty-two, probably. It's every two years, it's every even year. So twenty twenty-four, we will need a delegate this year. They haven't, um, given us a date yet. We haven't gotten the dates yet.
I did it last time. I would love to, thank you.
All right.
I second it.
We need a delegate and an alternate. So you'll be there. We need an alternate as well, whenever y'all.
Can we get somebody else to second?
I'll second whatever it is. Going around and round.
It's, it's when they vote, it was one member from each county.
All right, so, so right now, what, what we're saying is this is, uh, we, we believe it's NCACC.
Yes.
I, I don't believe this, this will be a legislative conference, it would be.
It's something else, right?
Right. Yeah, this something's part of that. Which we probably need to get clarification on.
When the dates come out, then we're in number. Right now, they're.
Yeah, well, I, let's, let's.
Want to wait?
Let's wait.
Okay.
Okay.
You can still go ahead and vote, dude, on the delegate.
Well, we're fine with that. I'm fine with that. Let's, okay, yeah, we go ahead and vote to, we've got a motion on the floor. All in favor, I? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Oh, it is NACO. Kelly just texted and said it's NACO.
Yeah, it is NACO.
It is NACO.
It's Washington.
It's one, okay.
That's what I thought it was.
Okay.
Okay. That's in March.
Oh, it's a conference.
In February.
Okay. Oh, it's NACO, okay. I was thinking of the NCACC.
All right, so it is clarification. It's Legislative Goals Conference for NACO, which will be in Washington. Okay, all right, so that's clear. Um, next item would be a closed session to, um, discuss a personnel matter. Um, do we anticipate any action after?
Yes.
Okay, and
Before we go a close section, next month I will be absent from my meeting. I got accepted into the advanced leadership class. For February, February ninth, I'll be in class. School of Governance.